Thank you, Scouts, for leading us. Now, if we could, call the rule. Clerk's leaders?
Trustee Anthony.
Present.
Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Graham Hudek. The record reflect that Clerk Segrist is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman.
Here this evening.
And Supervisor Williams.
Good evening. I'd like to call for a motion to adopt the agenda with one minor change, and that's to introduce our zero.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include Resolution Zero, which is a resolution to declare May 12 through the 18th as Police Week in Canton Township.
Second.
Is there a copy of that resolution?
Yeah.
John has it.
Okay.
Thank you very much. We have a motion of support. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. We call for a motion to approve two sets of minutes from April 23rd and May 8th, 2019, board meetings.
Mistress Supervisor, I move to approve the minutes from April 23rd and May 8th.
Second.
Motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you. Now would be time in the agenda for citizens' non-agenda item. If there's anybody who would like to make public comment right now on an item that's not on the agenda, now would be the time. Is there any public comment? Any public comments? Okay, seeing none, call for a motion. Treasurer Slavens for...
Mistress Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Second.
Those in favor of again paying the bills this month, please say aye.
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 The motion carries. We have now two resolutions. If, I would ask that retired FBI Special Agent and Trustee John Anthony make the presentation of the two resolutions.
I have my privilege to present two resolutions on behalf of the Board of Trustees at Canton Township. First resolution is to declare May 12 through the 18th of this year as Police Week in Canton, Michigan. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers' Memorial Day, and the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. Established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving the communities across the United States, including approximately 17,000 full-time uniformed officers in Michigan. And whereas members of the law enforcement deserve the appreciation and respect of the people of Canton for merit, dignity, bravery, and reliability they exhibit each and every day, we must also honor the sacrifices made by the families of the officers, as each day they must face constant fear as the loved ones work to protect us. And whereas in 2018 alone, 168 police officers were killed and many more assaulted in the line of duty across the country. The names of these dedicated public servants who made the ultimate sacrifice are engraved in the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas the Michigan fallen officers will never be forgotten, nor will their sacrifice to their respective communities. By choosing to commit themselves to law enforcement, these brave individuals answered the call for service and willingly put their lives in jeopardy. We commend them for recognizing service as a noble career and protecting the public safety, and also all those who are serving without incident to date. And whereas Canton, Michigan, and all Michigan citizens have turned to members of law enforcement for assistance and support in times of distress, whether they are coping with personal crisis or struggling through civil disorder or national disaster, our communities rely on these courageous individuals when it is difficult to stand on our own. And we are indebted to the unwavering public service of our local and state police. We are indeed fortunate and grateful for the contributions of law enforcement officers to the people of this state. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton declares May 12 through 18th, 2019, as Police Week in Canton, Michigan. We publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community, as well as those across the state and nation, and honor police who place their lives on the line for the safety and security of communities. Signed by Pat Williams, Canton Township Supervisor, this 14th day of May, 2019.
Or...
Motion and support to read into the formal record this evening. Those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you very much. Josh, we will get that to you post haste after the meeting. Second resolution, Josh?
Second resolution is for a dog.
A special dog.
Brighter than some people I know, right? Right, Officer?
Yes, sir.
Officer Sosak, glad to meet you.
Thank you.
Officer Sosak is the handler for the dog. German Shepherd?
Yes.
He's actually retired. He served us well, a long period of time, and we felt it was important to recognize him as much a member of Canton Public Safety Department as any uniformed officer. This is a resolution recognizing retired K-9 Officer Haas. Does he have a first name, or just Haas? Just Haas? You have whatever you want, buddy. Whereas the Canton Public Safety Department recognizes the importance of its police K-9 unit, and whereas in April 2011, Haas started his career with law enforcement with Canton Police Department's K-9 unit, where he and his partner, Officer Brian Sosak, have been responsible for the tracking and apprehension of suspects, searching for evidence and missing persons, building searches, narcotic searches, and crowd control. And whereas Haas and his partner attended weekly training classes and were required to certify biannually with the National Association of Professional K-9 Handlers. And whereas for over seven years, Haas and his partner worked full-time on patrol, responding to runs that include robbery, breaking and entering, homicide, assault, and narcotics possession, and missing and wanted persons. And whereas Haas and his partner participated in numerous annual school special events and public demonstrations, and whereas Haas and his partner, his retired partner, whereas Haas has retired from his K-9 duties on April 5th, 2019, but will continue to reside with his partner. And whereas the Canton Police Department is appreciative of Haas and Officer Sosak's dedication and commitment to the K-9 unit. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trust of the Charter Township of Canton, upon recommendation of the Director of Public Safety, does hereby recognize Haas for his commemorative contribution to the Canton community and the Canton Public Safety Department. Signed, Pat Williams, Canton Supervisor, May 5th to 14th this year. Congratulations. Introduce Sergeant Ed Johnson, who has a reward for Haas.
Support.
There's been a motion to read into the formal record, the resolution, and the support. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Sergeant Johnson, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. On behalf of the Canton Police Department, I'd like to thank Officer Sosak and his partner, K-9 Haas, and I'd like to go over a few of his stats that he's had through his career. Haas has 1,947 vehicles that he's checked. He's been part of $645,895 in cash forfeiture, and 31 track fines, and he's done 81 demos. Brian has been very dedicated to the department, as well as Haas. And on behalf of the Canton Police Department, Brian, we'd like to present you with this plaque.
I'd ask Haas to talk, but it's a little tied up now, chewing on something.
Thank you, everybody, very much. This is very nice. And thanks to the Director and the Chief, who's not here right now, for supporting the K-9 unit, and everybody on the board. Thank you.
Now we're going to move into the regular agenda. Guys, you can go ahead and take off if you'd like to. It's pretty boring after that.
Mistress Supervisor, I move that the Board adopt the consent calendar as presented with Item C1, Consider Extension of Existing Metro Act Permit with AT&amp;T. Item C2, Consider Second Reading of an Ordinance to Amend Chapter 46, Article 2 of the Canton Code of Ordinances entitled "Offenses Involving the Person," to revise Sections 46-31. And finally, Item, sorry, Item C3, Consider Authorization of Permit for 2019 Liberty Fest Fireworks Display.
Support.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Moving into general calendar, Item G1, Request Approval of Website ADA Compliance Service with Civic Plus.
Mistress Supervisor, this is in the form of two resolutions. I move to approve waiving the township purchasing policy requirements for publication of a request for proposal for purchases in excess of $10,000, and approve the attached three-year agreement between the township and Civic Plus for the AudioEye Ally Services.
Support.
IT services requesting, is requesting permission to subscribe to an ADA compliant service and certification solution called AudioEye, which is offered by Civic Plus, the township's website hosting provider. Civic Plus has partnered with AudioEye to offer its customers the ability to quickly, efficiently, and cost-effectively ensure that their website is ADA compliant and certified as such. Subscription to the service will allow the township to become quickly compliant with federal laws as it pertains to the website and ADA compliance requirements, which was noted as a needed enhancement with our ADA transition plan. The initial quote for the price of the service was $35,800. In order to limit the township's costs, changes were made to our website structure, which allowed the cost to be greatly reduced to $11,300. Civic Plus will hold this cost flat if the township signs a three-year agreement. We are asking that the Board waive the purchasing policy and allows myself to sign a three-year agreement with Civic Plus. Are there any questions or comments? Director Trumbull is with us this evening. Go ahead, Emery.
Hi, so is this the only company that does something like this, or did we look at others also?
We did not look at others. This one is certified to work with Civic Plus, which works on the same network or the system that Civic Plus works with. So this one is known to work directly with, being able to scan through the website, the way that it's set up, through our current website host. So initially, when the price came back so high, at the $35,800, we said if we couldn't get it down closer to the $10,000, we were going to have to try to do an RFP and see if we could make it work with our current website. When they were able to whittle it down, and down to the $11,300, I believe it was, knowing that there's not going to be any issues with our current website, that we know it's going to scan everything effectively, it's guaranteed to do that, we thought it was well worth the price of trying to get another company that might be a little bit less, but might not offer as good of a service that Civic Plus would not guarantee to work.
Now, this is going to be done, because you're revamping the website anyway, correct? So this is...
Well, it's two different issues. So yeah, we're redesigning the website now, which is with our Civic Plus, we're allowed to do after three years of having the website initially. And then, as we noted in the ADA transition plan, there was numerous items on our website that were not compliant. We have trained employees on what the rules were for the ADA compliance, but unless we manually search them right now, sometimes we don't find them. This tool is going to automatically scan everything, and if something on there is not ADA compliant, it's going to shoot back immediately and let us know that we have to change it. So that allows us this. So this came up through our ADA transition plan of something that we needed to work towards. Looking for a solution and talking to Civic Plus, they said they are partnered with this company who will do this.
But I understand, so the ADA transition plan, you're still, I mean, it hasn't come before the Board yet, so you're still creating a committee, from what I understand, to go through it together?
First meeting is scheduled for, that new committee is May 21st at 3:00 p.m.
May 21st, okay.
3:00 p.m.
Now, you can't do this until you, I mean, like you said, the website's going to be changed, and then you'll put this on it.
Correct. This, I believe, will go into effect on July 1st or so. It was some lag time, so we were going to get the new websites coming up in June, and then by the time they scan everything and get everything set up for this to properly scan, it was going to be a couple-month lag period to try to get it all up and running at the same time.
And then you're taking this as a committee, like we had said, signed up to volunteer to review it after that, then?
The website?
Yes.
Yeah.
And the plan is for them to kind of look at it today as is, with the enhancements, and then after AudioEye, so they can see and feel the differences.
So then, is everyone who wanted to be on the committee, or is it just like an open invite to anyone who wanted to be on that committee?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Actually, it'd be a subcommittee of the ADA Committee. See, go ahead, Summer.
Oh, no, Wendy answered my question.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Second motion tied to G1.
Mistress Supervisor, I further move to approve a purchase order in an amount not to exceed $11,300 payable to Civic Plus Incorporated for subscription to and services offered by the AudioEye Ally Services.
Support.
In favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Item G2, Request Purchase of a 2019 Computer Workstation Replacements.
Mistress Supervisor, I move to waive the purchasing policy requests for proposal requirements for this purchase utilizing the price as negotiated by the State of Michigan.
In summary, during the financial challenges of the past decade, the IT Services Department worked to minimize the impact by greatly reducing or eliminating scheduled computer workstation replacements. 2019 is the first year to address the necessary large-scale replacement of outdated and out-of-warranty computers. In addition to the expired warranty, the older computers remain on the Microsoft Windows 7 operating system. Microsoft has published a schedule for end-of support in January 2020 for its Windows 7 operating system. Additionally, several applications internal to the township will cease to support, have support for Windows 7 later this year. These factors make it important that the township replace a significant number of computer workstations this calendar year. The computer pricing is very aggressive and is derived from the State of Michigan purchasing contract negotiated with Dell Computers. For this reason, IT Services requesting that the purchase policy requirement to bid this purchase be waived and the purchase order be approved in the amounts in the specifications listed in the quotes. The total amount is not to exceed, again, $140,500, and was included in the 2019 budget approved by the Board. Are there any Board questions or comments for Wendy? Director Trumbull?
There are Windows 10, I think it says now. Do we have any Windows 10? Do you know?
I am on Windows 10.
Yeah, we do? Okay. The reason I ask is if there was going to be training for people that, because it is a lot different than their Windows 7 platform. I mean, many may use it at home, but...
It's been rolled out to a few different people. They have needed some new computers, and as certain applications were requiring Windows 10, certain computers were upgraded as necessary. I've been on it for probably six months to a year, and I really haven't had any issues personally with it, my township computer.
But you're so technical.
Oh. I don't know about that.
Thanks.
On the Windows 10, have you had any issues at all? I mean, you said you haven't, has anyone with the virus scanner? I know sometimes it locks up, just because I've used it for a while.
I have not heard of an overwhelming issue with the Windows 10 computers from anybody at the township yet.
Joe has had to address some interface issues with other software, and he's done that on the fly with me, done little patches that the Windows 10 people put out in cyberspace that he was able to do quickly. I have no idea how it works, but I'm getting through it.
That could have been a user error, too.
ID10T errors, right? Those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Second motion.
Mistress Supervisor, I further move to create a new purchase order to Dell Computers in an amount not to exceed $140,500 to cover the cost of purchasing 153 computers.
Support.
Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Item G3, Consider Approval of Budget Amendment and Award for the Purchase Order Contract to Michigan CAT for the purchase of a CAT 308E2 RQ Rubber Track Excavator and Towmaster Tilt Trailer to Transport. Good night, Wendy.
This will be in the form of two motions. Mistress Supervisor, I move to approve the following budget amendment. Increase expenses to the capital outlay vehicles account in the amount of $69,458, and an increase into the other capital outlay vehicles account in the amount of $69,458, and a decrease in expense to the transfer to budget fund balance of $138,916.
Support.
In summary, Public Works staff operates and maintains the township's 460 miles of water main, as well as 360 miles of sanitary sewer, multiple hydrants, valves, and other Public Works Equipment Fleet currently has a 1999 Case backhoe in use, which has reached its serviceable life and due for replacement. In order to continue providing the necessary level of service, this machinery will be replaced with the proposed excavator. The CAT 308 excavator is to be purchased from Michigan CAT, a sole-source provider in Michigan. Public Works is moving all CAT equipment, to all CAT equipment, due to its excellent quality, and DPW operators and mechanics being familiar with the CAT products and operations. Are there any Board questions? The package was put together by Mr. Belair, who is out sick today. He caught the flu from his wife. He's got a pretty good detail here in terms of background and...
Was this not bid, Mistress Supervisor? Was this not bid because it's a sole-source provider?
Sole-source provider in the state of Michigan, yes.
Got you.
And the specifications are attached.
Okay.
Okay, see, no questions or comments? Okay, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Second motion.
Mistress Supervisor, I further move to award a purchase order contract to Michigan CAT for an amount not to exceed $138,916 for the purchase of a 2019 CAT 308E2 RQ Rubber Track Excavator and Towmaster Tilt Transport Trailer.
Support.
Okay, those in favor of the second motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Item G4, Authorize an Extension of Contracts for Sheena Roofing, Spectrum Signs, Manic Smith Group, and Kentwood Office Furniture.
Mistress Supervisor, I move to authorize yourself, the township supervisor, and/or myself, the township clerk, to sign an extension to the agreements for roof repair and replacement services to Sheena Roofing and Sheet Metal, office furniture repair and replacement to Kentwood Office Furniture, sign design, manufacture, and installation to Spectrum Sign and Design, geotechnical services to Manic Smith Group. The contract extensions will be for a period of three years, each pursuant to the original contracts.
Support.
In terms of background information, for the past three years, after successful completion of the request for proposal, Canton Township has entered into separate contracts for the specific provision of services with four companies listed below as the sole providers to the township. Also listed were those companies are the services which they have provided for the past three years with a high level of quality and customer service. It is requested that the township exercise their ability to extend the contracts of the aforementioned companies for another three years pursuant to the existing contracts. So this is simply an extension to an existing contract. Any questions, comments for Director Hohenberger? Seeing none. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Consider Approval of Improvements for Irrigation at Heritage Park.
Mistress Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase from Reliable Landscaping Incorporated at 8285 North Lilly Road here in Canton, Michigan, 48187, for the installation of an irrigation system at the, at, an amount of $58,300 to be paid from the account number listed.
Support.
In an effort to significantly enhance play surfaces in Heritage Park and support the future growth, Leisure Services is seeking to add an irrigation system to the west end of the park, utilizing infrastructure currently servicing pheasant-run golf course. Initial phase of the larger project includes additional taps near Hole 9, as well as underground lines that would run through the cricket field, football field, and up to the proposed new baseball field to be built in the fall of 2019. This project is being funded through Wayne County Park Village Funds, with work to be performed by Reliable Landscaping as been stated. Are there any questions for Director Hohenberger?
So these areas have not had irrigation in the past? They've just, we've relied on mother nature?
No, there's no irrigation for any of the ball fields over there.
Oh, really? Huh. How old are those ball fields? I know we renovated them in recent years.
Probably, those ball fields haven't been renovated in a while, so they're probably, the fields are, I gotta say, well, they're over 15 years old because they've been there long prior to me.
Thank you. No other questions? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Item G6, Consider Approval to Bid Award for Roof and Soffit Replacement at the Canton Human Services Center.
Mistress Supervisor, I move to award the bid and the contract for the Canton Human Services Center roof and soffit replacement to Weather Seal Home Improvement Company at 5166 Oro Drive, Shelby Township, Michigan, 48047, in an amount not to exceed $70,465, with funds to be paid from the account number listed for Community Development Block Grant.
Support.
Okay, very good. We're going to fix the roof at the Community Human Services Building. Are there any questions for Director Hohenberger? Okay, seeing none. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Item G7, Consider Approval of Bid Award for Sidewalk Rehabilitation at the Village Theater.
Mistress Supervisor, I move to award the bid and contract for the sidewalk rehabilitation at Village Theater to Rotondo Construction Corporation at 20771 Randall Street, Farmington Hills, Michigan, 48336, in an amount not to exceed $40,573, with funds to be paid from the account number listed for capital outlay buildings and improvements.
Support.
Very good. If you've been out to Village Theater, you've noticed that the front sidewalk is pretty beat up and needs to be replaced. Are there any questions for Director Hohenberger? Go ahead, Steve.
Just on the account, this is different than the sidewalk account that municipal services use.
That's correct. This was budgeted through the Village Theater budget for out there.
Thanks.
Questions, comments? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Item G8, Consider Approval to Increase Purchase Order for the Rental of Liberty Fest Tents, Tables, and Chairs.
Mistress Supervisor, I move to approve the increase to the purchase order for American Rentals Incorporated, 4901 West Grand River Avenue in Lansing, Michigan, 48906, in an amount not to exceed $21,500 annually, with funds to be paid from the account number listed for Recreation Special Events Rentals.
Support.
Very good. Liberty Fest is coming, June 13, 14, 15 of this year, I believe is correct, Father's Day weekend. This RBA doesn't do justice to the amount of work that's going on behind the scenes by Leisure Services and the entire organization of the township, coming together, all the functional areas, logistical planning for this event, and this is an annual thing where it just allows us to go out and rent the equipment we need to set up for the Liberty Fest. Are there any comments, questions?
I just have a real quick question. Are you going to be increasing the amount of chairs and tents? Is it...
Yes. Yeah, so this gives us the flexibility. So what we have is, we base our purchase order with this company off of prior usage, and every year we have little changes in what we need, depending on what different vendors we have or different features we have. So this just gives us a little more flexibility, but it won't be an overall increase or change to the Liberty Fest budget. We'll just spend a little less elsewhere if we need to spend more on tents, tables, and chairs, but the unit price that was bid out on the tents, tables, and chairs would stay the same.
Questions or comments? Questions or comments? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The item G nine. Consider approval of proposal for Summit Aquatic Center Lazy River Coating Replacement.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to award a contract for the Summit Aquatic Center Lazy River Coating Replacement Project to Aquatic Source at one-nine-zero Summit Street in Brighton, Michigan, four-eight-one-one-six, for thirty thousand dollars, with funds to be paid from the account number listed for capital outlay buildings and improvements.
Support.
Okay, this allows us to, uh, resurface the lazy river at the summit, and I think sometimes, uh, the team puts together sentences to challenge to see if we can really read them or not. One of those sentences, the lead-in, so are there any questions for Director Hohenberger? Go ahead, Diane.
I have a quick question. Um, I noticed there were three different types you could use, and you chose the Diamond Bright Quartz. Um, is, is that gonna give you more than ten years?
Yes. It should. Now, Marsite sometimes has a ten-year, is expected to be ten years. This current coating did not hold up as well as we would have liked to see. We would have liked to see us get more than ten years. We did get the ten years. The expect, the life expectancy of the Diamond Bright is much longer. The Pebble Tech option that was also in there is much longer, longer than that, but it's a very coarse surface and, um, very tough on feet and little children's knees and those sorts of things, so we wanted to stay away from that option.
[inaudible]
It's, there's no, there's a warranty, but it's not nearly the, the length of the life of it, but I would expect fifteen-plus years out of this surface.
Thank you.
Questions? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G ten. Consider approval, twenty nineteen budget amendments to police forfeiture accounts.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve amendments to the forfeiture revenue and expenditure accounts of the two thousand nineteen police budget as stated below. Increase two thousand nineteen fi, police revenues and the fund balance appropriation federal DEA forfeiture account number for fifty thousand dollars and fund balance appropriation omnibus forfeiture account number for forty-five thousand dollars and an increase in two thousand nineteen police expenditures for program expenses of the omnibus forfeiture account in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars and program expenses from the DEA forfeitures account number for fifty thousand dollars respectively.
Support.
In terms of background, during the first quarter of twenty nineteen, the department has spent unforeseen forfeiture funds in relationship to investigations and adjudications on drug forfeiture, task force cases, as well as incurred the expense of a second K-9 purchase due to the unexpected passing of Thor. This amendment request also includes funds to cover two new computer tables and a new PSD server from Interstate Security as part of a large security camera purchase project being implemented by the township. All purchases have been, will be, in accordance with township's purchasing policies. Are there any questions for... Director, Public Safety, Joshua.
I have a question. Um, it's not directly related to the RBA, but it's to the, um, subject of civil asset forfeiture. I know that the governor recently signed legislation, um, revising when you could, um, use civil asset forfeiture. Has the public safety department done any, um, like, updated budgets to figure out how that's gonna affect, um, purchasing power in the future?
That's not gonna have as significant of an impact on our budget as the civil asset forfeiture we've been dealing with for several years even before that legislation, so...
Okay, thank you.
I think, too, this is over dropping by... ...money that's already in the accounts?
Right, yeah. I just meant for future, yeah.
Yeah, with the future change, there could be monies that won't be allowed to go into the accounts until conviction is, is reached. So just delay when the money hits. Josh doesn't spend it typically until he gets it, so...
I have a question about that issue. Director Meyer, you may not know the details, but in that instance, like, so with the new directive about civil asset forfeiture, if somebody is turned into a, like, an informant, like, an asset, um, so let's say, like, a pawn shop owner, for example, if, let's say we, you know, confiscated, uh, six hundred thousand dollars in value, uh, but then turned them into an informant and they never saw prosecution, would those assets, um, go back to the, to the owner, or would we be able to, to, to hold them still? Because there would be no conviction, right?
Right, so that's an, that's an interesting question. That's something we would have to work out with the prosecutor, because in a lot of those, so, so what you're referring to is like an ORC case where, um, perhaps a pawn shop is buying stolen merchandise that's, that's been taken from a Home Depot or a Lowe's. Technically, we cannot give that, that's evidentiary, that's evidence. We can't turn that stolen merchandise back over to a pawn shop owner. Um, now, it gets tricky because we have to be able to account for everything that we seize. Uh, so we have to be able to show the chain and be able to show that that, that property was, in fact, stolen property.
One to pay attention to as it evolves and see how it really will. Good stuff. Okay, um, those in favor of, uh, the propos, uh, the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G eleven. Purchase of a one-year extended warranty for the eight-hundred megahertz radios.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of a Motorola one-year extended warranty for two-hundred-and-twenty-seven mobile and portable eight-hundred megahertz radios in the amount of fifteen thousand eight hundred and ten dollars from Comm Source Incorporated at four-one-two-seven-one Concept Drive in Plymouth, Michigan, four-eight-one-seven-oh.
For twenty-twelve, the public safety department purchased comprehensive new eight-hundred megahertz radio system. The original investment in the system, uh, mobile and portable radios was just over a million dollars. It included five-year warranty, which has since expired. Motorola continues to offer one-year extended warranties through their local, their only local authorized repair vendor, Comm Source. The warranty includes onsite service, pickup, and delivery based on the replacement of the cost of radios. Services coverage is, this service coverage is recommended. Are there any questions for Director Meyer? Okay, seeing none. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G twelve. Consider new request to renew billing service agreement with AcuMed Billing, Inc.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the renewal of a five-year contract with AcuMed Billing Incorporated for the cost recovery billing of emergency medical services and limited fire services offered by the Canton Fire Department utilizing the Michigan Intergovernmental Trade Network quote of a six percent service fee.
Support.
Canton currently contracts with AcuMed Billing for the service of invoicing and collecting fees for emergency medical services provided by the fire department. This contract provides that AcuMed Billing, Inc. invoices our patients' insurance companies, Medicaid, Medicare, and if the patient is uninsured, the patient directly for emergency medical services related to hospital transports. AcuMed Billing, Inc. also invoices class, cost recovery fees for fire-related service of vehicle extracations only. The fee scheduled charged by Canton for extr, extrication service and emergency medical service was mostly recently approved by the Township Board of Trustees in two thousand eight. AcuMed Billing, Inc. collects these pre-established fees and sends the monthly cost recovery checks to Canton, along with an invoice for six percent service fee. The service fee is the only fee paid to AcuMed Billing, Inc. Historically, AcuMed Billing has provided an exceptional percentage rate of collections. Canton receives approximately one point eight million annually in cost recovery fees. Are there any questions for Director Meyer? Okay, seeing none. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G thirteen, which will have two motions. Consider approving the purchase or replacement of Ford Explorer Police Interceptor and associated twenty nineteen, and an associated twenty nineteen police budget amendment.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of one two thousand twenty Ford Explorer Hybrid from Signature Ford at three-nine-four-two West Lansing Road, Perry, Michigan, four-eight-eight-seven-two via Macomb County Bid, in the amount of thirty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Support.
Vehicle will replace a two thousand sixteen Ford Explorer that received significant body and frame damage after being struck by another vehicle while parked, while parked on the shoulder of I-275 in April. Because this was not a budgeted purchase, an amendment to the two thousand nineteen police budget is also being requested, and I am happy to say that the officer was not injured, true statement, accurate, yet minor injuries recovering. Okay. Are there any board comments, questions? Seeing none. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Supervisor, I further move to approve an amendment to the two thousand nineteen police budget as listed below, an increased revenue to the fund balance appropriations account in the amount of thirty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and increased expenses to the capital outlay vehicles account in the amount of thirty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Support.
Okay, those in favor of the second motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G fourteen. Appointment to the Board of Ethics of Charisse Anderson.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the appointment of Charisse Anderson to the Board of Ethics as the Township Board appointee.
Support.
On May eighth, twenty eighteen, the Board of, Township Board approved a second reading of the Code of Ethics, which amended chapter two of the Township ordinances and created a Board of Ethics to hear complaints. The Board recreated the Ethics Subcommittee to Review the Applications and Appointed, for the appointed position, and make a recommendation on May seventh and eighth. The Subcommittee met to interview three candidates out of seventeen initial applicants. After thirty-minute interviews, the Subcommittee unanimously voted to recommend Charisse Anderson, Esquire, to the Board of Ethics. Are there any questions or comments for Clerk Segrist?
I'll just make a comment. You had, uh, quite a, a great selection. I was looking over the three resumes, so, very impressive with, uh, the folks that stepped up to apply...
Somebody reads the focus, because we had seventeen.
Isn't it nice? Yeah.
Amazing, and, uh, the three of us sat on the interview board and, and, uh, as the, Pat has said, the, it was a unanimous vote for this young lady who was very impressive and I think will be a good choice.
And it was hard to pick the top three, too, because they were, the resumes were excellent. We have some really good, great, smart residents out there.
I saw it looked fantastic. They look all, like, they're really qualified, so...
Yeah, and if you could have looked at all seventeen, it was quite a, a challenge. Now, when I did call the individuals who we had interviewed and did not receive it, I did ask that they pay attention and, and hang out, because, you know, as I said, there's three-year terms and, um, we may need their services in the future, and they all agreed that they would be willing to serve in the future as well, so that was, that was excellent. A good group of people, um, you know, it's gonna be a good, a good start, uh, to the committee.
Do we have the other committee member? Who, Pat, you appoint one of us?
I'm going to appoint Don Turner, who I think you all know from library board, school board years, and then you've got, um, an appointment coming from Kareen Conley, I think is the third.
Yep.
And I don't know who that person is.
I have yet to be, to be told a name.
Do we have a timeline on when she's gonna make that appointment?
I think she knows who that person is, it just hasn't shared the information with me. So, I think between Mike and I, I'm sure we can get the information, get it done.
Yeah, she, yeah, now that we've made our appointment, I think she's ready, uh, and so we'll probably be pulling them together in, in, in June.
Great, thanks. The others, I mean, the other fourteen, you know, that weren't called, and I would still not, you know, if you want to look at other committees, that's a possibility, or even keep on for this one.
Comments, questions? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G fifteen. Approval of purchase order to Dominion Voting Systems for purchase of election, election equipment.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order to Dominion Voting Systems Incorporated for the purchase of software in the amount of twenty-three thousand six hundred dollars.
Support.
In summary, Dominion Voting Systems provided the township with equip, election equipment in two thousand eighteen election and every subsequent election. The clerk's office determined that two additional high-speed tabulators were required to count increases in, township paid for the software for smaller scanners and not the appropriate software package in the contract. Dominion has provided credit for the amount paid of fourteen thousand six hundred against the additional software costs of thirty-eight thousand two hundred. The remaining twenty-three thousand six hundred can be absorbed in the existing budget. Do you have any questions for Clerk Segrist? Or comments? Go ahead, Anne Ray.
Yeah, so, I'm trying, so basically, we paid them for software and then they credited us money back because we did not get the, we only got the smaller scanners. Are there larger scanners that we didn't get it for, or...
Um, in a bid to save township taxpayers' money, I purchased Canon scanners off the shelf. Um, and in doing so, I had acquired the software that was proprietary and owned by Dominion and the computer systems that was, that are provided by Dominion as well. Um, the, but the, the software packages I had purchased were for the smaller machines. I was operating under the assumption that we would only need a driver adjustment, which would be free of charge, and so I was attempting to not have to pay the additional twenty-three thousand six hundred dollars so that we could spend it on something else like sidewalks or something along those lines. Uh, Dominion did come back and say that that was not acceptable and that they would require, request that we pay the twenty-three thousand six hundred dollars, and so I acquiesced, and we are paying them the twenty-three thousand six hundred dollars.
Well, good try.
Good try there.
Let's go, hey, you tried.
I did end up saving the township about eighteen thousand dollars on the scanners themselves.
So did they take back the other software that you had bought then?
Um...
Off the shelf?
They, they, they just installed, so on elect, for the election, they installed the larger software, and then they billed us.
Okay.
And that's what you see in front of you today.
Thanks.
Welcome.
Any additional questions, comments? Seeing none. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That concludes our formal business for this evening. Is there any additional public comment? Any additional public comment? Seeing no public comment. Um, Director Meyer, Director Hohenberger, Chief, anything additional? Any board comment?
Relay for Life is this weekend, so, and, as well as River Day at Preservation Park Saturday morning.
Arrow is huge. It's the Senior Summit, all-day event, starts at, like, eight o'clock in the morning, goes to mid-afternoon. Calling bingo again.
And it's sold out?
Oh, it was probably, i-if you're looking for, if the elected are looking to have conversation with some of the toughest cookies in our community, some of the toughest questions, come stop by the Senior Summit and, uh, they'll put you through your paces, but I'm looking forward to it. It's always a fun event. Um, any... Yeah, go ahead, Michael.
Last Saturday, there was the Greater Plymouth-Canton Area Service Project, which was, uh, conducted at Park, the Plymouth Arts and Recreation Complex, uh, but it is a dual, uh, put on by both the Plymouth and Canton, uh, the, uh, community foundations as well as many other, uh, service clubs in the community. It was well-attended. There were over fifteen hundred volunteers who packaged meals to try to end, uh, hunger here locally and around the, around the country and nationally. Uh, there were many people from public safety and other, um, departments here at the township who participated in doing the food packaging. It was a great event, and, uh, I had some fun. I was there wheeling around on my cart, because I broke my leg. Um, it was great, a great event, and I think it's, it's excellent that the, um, both communities, along with our, uh, staff here at the township, participated in that event. It is a testament to the people who work for the township.
They got to see me in a hairnet and a beard mask, so that was really...
Oh, insane.
A good look for me. Um, oh, go ahead, Diane.
I was just gonna say real quick, and I did put on, um, understanding water bill. We have gone to the bimonthly, and even your water bill has changed. So you can go on the website and, um, on the water billing website and, uh, click on how to read your water bill, because it does look a little different. One of the great things the new water bill does is it gives the actual read date, so people can see, um, the water usage dates that they're paying for. Um, and also, you can, uh, pull up the eutilities, uh, which is the history of your water billing. So, um, it looks, it's very easy read, and I encourage everybody to take a look at, uh, how to read your new water bill.
Pat, um, to your best of your ability without a municipal services person here, can you tell us what work is started in the, um, Roads Program? I know, I know Hanford.
All the way from Canton Center across to Hagerty. Um, I saw Lily, there's work going on there.
Salts.
Salts has got some work going on.
Oh, really? It started on Salts?
Okay. And work going on.
Those are all from our village?
Yeah.
The combination.
The, um, Salts and Hanford is a combination, but Lily is us, right? Yeah.
Okay, the ridge is, is work happening, happening around the waterway that will begin, I don't know if it's began yet, uh, but all the information's available... know if it's began yet, uh, but all the information's available on the website, and the, um, the committee is still meeting. Had a meeting, the, the Roads Task Force, uh, mini task, what do you, what do we call-
The Intergovernmental Work Group or something, we called it.
Yeah, Intergovernmental Group with, uh, a couple residents, three participants, also. Three residents are participating in, and they're, they're helping set the priorities for the roads project, not only for, uh, 19 and 20, but hopefully they'll be looking at a multi-year programming, um, and they're gonna meet again, I think in June is the intention. And Summer's a part of that, as well as Michael.
Yeah. Additionally, there's the routine maintenance, so we're gonna, we've, we're going through in crack sealing some of the asphalt that was put down, uh, a couple of years ago and in some of the neighborhoods that had SADs, because one of the goals of the Roads Millage is to keep the good roads good, not just focus on bringing the bad roads into good shape. So, I, it's a small amount of the actual millage itself, but that'll be happening, and it'll happen overnight, so most people won't even see them out there, uh, crack sealing and, and, and doing that.
We got quite a few letters of interest for the local, um, subdivision roads project, so that should be coming before the board soon.
That's for the following year?
Yes.
And then I think there's just one bad, almost sinkhole going on in back, south of Geddes. I think we got-
That's on the list for this year.
Is it? It's like, people are swerving around it. I have to get on the website and click on it, but it's like the whole side is caving in.
Mike hasn't done it yet, so I'll do it for him. Doesn't cover potholes.
No, no. Does, ours doesn't.
You have road hazards.
The county does.
Please report it to the county, I, you know, send in a ticket online, takes two minutes to do, but if you, if you have a concern with potholes, do send it directly to the county. It's not part of the millage process at all.
That's why we should request, like, when the utilities do that, because that was a utility hole, basically. They cut across new concrete or asphalt there that we see about how we can make them go under instead. I know it's more expensive, but it saves these holes, you know? We have a lead like the girl-
Yes.
-graduation on June 6th. Is there a ceremony for the boys at all?
Yes, be a model man, and that-
Two is coming very soon, maybe next couple weeks.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, I'll try to get, I'll get that to you tomorrow.
May 23rd at 6:30 PM in the Maple Oak Room. Maple Oak Room at the summit.
Board comment? Okay, seeing none. Call for motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Are adjourned. Thank you, scouts, for coming tonight and sitting through the whole thing.